Good evening, everyone. I'm Metro Board Vice Chair Paul Smedberg, and I represent the Commonwealth of Virginia on the Metro Board of Directors. I'm joined by my colleagues. Let's see, I thought there was going to be one other here, but I don't, she's not here yet, okay. Also with me this evening is Metro's Senior Vice President of Management and Budget, Bob Tussillo, Jennifer Ellison, Metro's Board Corporate Secretary. And I don't see any elected officials in the audience either at this time. So, welcome to the public hearing on Metro's Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. This hearing is convened by the Metro Board of Directors to gather public comments on two dockets. The first docket, B25-01, Metro's Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Improvement Program and Federal Fiscal Year 2026 Grant Applications. And the second docket, B25-2, Metro's Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Operating Budget and Associated Service Proposals. Notice of this hearing was made by publication in The Washington Post, and ads were placed in El Tempo Latino, The Washington China News, The Korean Times, The Washington Afro, The Washington Informer, Adref, and Dai Nai. Information was also provided by our social media and the Transit app. Notice was also made online and sent to all jurisdictions within the metro compact area and to area libraries. Signs were placed in all rail stations and on buses and metro access vehicles. And Metro Rail ambassadors provided information in person. We're all looking forward to hearing from everyone here this evening who's joined us to provide testimony. Before we take testimony, we have a brief presentation by Mr. Tussillo that provides details on the budget proposal along with the proposed changes in service. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tussillo.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome to the public hearing. I'll start with a brief overview of the proposed 2026 budget that was submitted to the board in December. This slide is a snapshot of the WAMADA Strategic Transformation Plan, which is a five-year plan starting in February of 2023. There are four goals that are identified there: service excellence, talented teams, regional opportunity and partnership, and sustainability. The proposed budget that was submitted to the board supports our Strategic Transformation Plan in all four of the goals. This slide is our proposed highlights of the 2026 proposed budget of $5 billion. In December of 2024, the CEO of Metro submitted a proposed budget to the board. The $5 billion includes an operating budget of $2.6 billion and a capital budget of $2.4 billion. The budget supports our continued focus on operational efficiencies, service enhancements, and future planning, including a new better bus network and metro rail automation. The budget also maintains FY 2025 fare levels. And through these efforts, Metro aims to provide high-quality, sustainable public transportation to support the region's current and future needs. This slide is a breakdown of the budget. On the left-hand side is operating expenses. On the right-hand side are capital sources. Again, the budget rounds to about $5 billion. It's funded in part by $545 million in passenger and non-passenger revenues and $1.9 billion in jurisdictional subsidies. We also expect to end fiscal year 2025 with savings of $28 million, which can be applied to the FY 2026 budget. On the capital side, our proposed budget includes $2.4 billion for capital, including totaling projects totaling $2.1 billion, as well as $253 million in debt service and an estimated $10 million in revenue losses related to capital projects. The capital budget is funded through federal and state sources as well as $772 million in debt. Next slide. This slide is a snapshot of ridership going back to 2019. So, I'd like to focus on 2025, 2026, and 2027. Ridership growth has remained strong through the second half of 2024. Total ridership for 2024 was 21% higher than ridership in 2023. The growth has continued in the first part of 2025 with ridership up 9% in the first quarter of 2024, I'm sorry, 2025 versus quarter one of 2024. Revenue for the same period was up 28% Q1 over Q1. Based on this trend, we revised our ridership estimates for 2025 and beyond. We forecast that by the end of 2025, ridership will total 255 million trips, which is above our original FY 2025 budget estimate for ridership of 227 million riders. As such, the FY 2026 proposed budget is built on the projection of 268 million riders. This slide talks about operating budget drivers. So, as we develop the budget, we look at things that are key in driving budget, both revenue and costs. The key drivers that are identified here include ridership, inflation, and funding constraints. Ridership, as I mentioned, the strength in ridership growth over the recent months has allowed us to increase our ridership estimates. Metro ended 2024 above the budget estimate with 242 million riders. While ridership growth remains tied to office telework policies, FY 25 ridership to date continues to trend above budget. As telework patterns continue to change in the area, Metro will closely monitor these impacts on ridership projections. For inflation, we continue to monitor inflation, and we predict a 3% rise in costs in 2026 based on recent economic assumptions, though the impacts of historically high inflation from recent years have increased baseline expenses. New collective bargaining agreements that we have approved will also minimize the impact from inflationary spikes. On funding constraints, there's another change proposed in 2026 with the fact that federal COVID relief funding will have all been spent by the end of 2025, and so that funding is no longer available as it has been in the last few fiscal years. This slide again focuses on operating expenses. Metro's proposed operating budget is funded through $444 million in passenger revenue, $101 million in non-passenger, and $1.9 billion in jurisdictional subsidies. Metro expects to have, again, $28 million in prior year savings to apply to 2026. Passenger revenue is budgeted at 14, as a 14.7% increase relative to the 2025 approved budget, driven again by strong ridership growth. This slide focuses on revenue expenses and subsidy. It's a short of a short version of a P&amp;L schedule. And in 2026, operating revenue, to include passenger revenue, parking revenue, and other streams, is 11.8% higher than the 2025 budget. In addition, in 2026, the budget applies to $28 million one-time savings and a combined jurisdictional subsidy of $1.9 billion. The 2027 forecast, which is new to the operating budget, is a snapshot of revenue, expenses, and subsidies going forward. We identify this for planning purposes to help inform the board and the public of projected ridership revenue and economic assumptions and other funding. This slide is a subsidy calculation for 2026. Again, it's based on $1.9 billion in subsidy. The increase includes $52 million from the annual 3% subsidy growth, $95 million in one-time savings, and, oh, I'm sorry, one-time savings replacement, and $24 million for jurisdictional-sponsored bus enhancements that are included in the subsidy calculation. And as you can see, we identify the District of Columbia, Maryland, and Virginia's subsidy based on the proposed budget. This slide looks at service, how we optimize service. We include here keeping fares at current levels, introducing a new tap-to-ride contactless payment option for mobile devices. The new payment option will allow riders to pay with personal debit and credit cards or by mobile devices. That should be online later this fiscal year. Service enhancements in the 2026 budget include implementation of the year-one Better Bus Network with 11 more routes in the frequent service network. To address growing demand on metro rail, the budget includes targeted changes to service patterns and frequency. The budget also expands weekend hours of operation on metro rail by opening at 6:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday mornings and closing at 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday to support regional travel needs. Again, this slide looks at rail optimization. Excuse me, the budget also provides additional peak capacity at key bottlenecks for metro rail service and improves access to destinations to drive further ridership growth. This slide focuses on the capital program. So, we have a six-year capital improvement program totaling $12.5 billion, for which $10.5 billion in capital investments over six investment categories. It will also fund over $2 billion in debt service payments. And the next slide is, "We're looking to the future with strong ridership and customer-centered service enhancements as part of our six-year CIP. Metro has several major investments underway to advance asset management and serve the region's growing transit needs. We're excited about our recent accomplishments, and we look forward to serving our customers and the region in the next fiscal year." Finally, this slide focuses on providing written, written comments must be received by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, February 10. We outlined two options there, online or by mail. And that is the end of my presentation. I'll turn it back over to Vice Chair Smedberg.
Thank you, Mr. Tussillo. Before we call witnesses, I'd like to explain the testimony process this evening. We will begin with speakers who are registered in advance, and you'll be asked to come forward to the podium and the microphone when you are called on to speak. If you need a microphone brought to you, please raise your hand when I call your name, and someone will come to you. When I call, when I call up speakers, I'll also note the next two people in the queue so you can be prepared to come forward when it's your turn. If you haven't registered yet and would like to speak, please see staff outside at the registration table. If you've registered in advance, please be sure to check in at the registration table to let us know you're here. You can watch the hearing live online at wamada.com/budget, and the video will be archived on the Metro Forward YouTube channel. For the public record to accurately reflect who's providing testimony, I ask that you please state your name in any organization you represent before you begin your testimony. Since this hearing is being recorded and will be available on YouTube, please do not provide any personal information like address, phone number, or email in your testimony. Elected officials will be allowed five minutes. Everyone else will be allowed three minutes. If you hear a beep, or, yeah, you'll hear a beep when you have 15 seconds remaining. That's your cue to sum up and remain, any remaining testimony you may have. Each time will be, extra time will be given to translation if one is needed. We ask that you stay within your time limit because we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak and be heard. I also want to note that each speaker is also able to speak once at each hearing. Finally, I want to take a moment to recognize that this is where we listen to you. This is your opportunity to comment on proposals, and we are here to listen. We will not be able to answer questions during your testimony. WAMADA staff is available outside to answer questions. Detailed information is also available online at wamada.com/budget. Your comments will become part of public record that will be, that will be reviewed by the Metro Board of Directors. We also have members, have members of the board's two advisory committees here this evening with us, the Accessibility Advisory Committee and the Riders Advisory Council, who will be listening to your testimony to help inform their recommendations on the budget. Changes to the opinions represented or presented here tonight may be proposed in response to testimony received and subsequent staff analysis. Now it's the time to call for our first witness. As a reminder, please tell us your name and any organization you represent before you speak. And do you have the list?
Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Cunningham.
Okay, great. So, hi, my name is Rodney Cunningham. I'm not representing anyone but myself. So, I wanted to begin first by commending Metro for the job that you do. You do a fantastic job. And I really want to highlight the work that you did during the pandemic, which was five years ago now. That was extraordinary. So, I want to tip my hat off to you for that. So, thank you very much. I'm actually not going to talk about the budget, so I apologize. I did do the survey, so you have my comments on that.
We saw them, but, sorry.
Oh, you saw them already, good. So, actually, the reason why I came tonight is because this is one of the few opportunities that the public has to address Metro directly as opposed to email, so I wanted to take advantage of that. What I ask that you do, the reason why I'm here tonight, is I'm asking Metro to do a little bit more focus on encouraging riders and passengers to understand what it means to be in a shared space, which is public transportation. So, in other words, we have a lot of people, quite frankly, who don't seem to understand that metro, meaning the bus or the trains, are a shared space that we all have to take care of. And so, you know, when I take the train and I see people, you know, either, you know, playing music loudly without using earphones or trash in the stations or any other sort of disruptive behavior, all of that has an impact on the quality of life that all of us share. And so, I came tonight specifically to ask Metro to do more, to address that. It's not Metro's fault that people don't know how to act right, but Metro does have the opportunity to actually channel us or even educate us to do better. And so, that's why I came tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Next, we have Sandy Nuzell, followed by Rico Dancy.
Good evening, I'm Sandy Nuzell, resident of Fairfax County. Although I'm a member of the Accessibility Advisory Committee to Metro, I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I will mention that I am legally blind, and therefore, I depend on family, friends, public transportation, and metro access to go the places that I would like to go, when I would like to go. I also commend Metro for the tremendous job that they do in planning their budget, in repairs, in safety, keeping riders as safe as possible. But tonight, I want to address bus service and metro access indirectly because of bus service. So, this afternoon, I, like I said, I depend on public transportation to go places when I want to. And this afternoon, I ran a test case. How long would it take to go from my house to the Fairfax County Government Center? If I could hop in a car, it would take me 23 minutes. But I can't drive, so that's out. So, what are my options? Well, I could take public, excuse me, ride service, like a taxi or Uber, and that would take me about 45 minutes and cost me a chunk of money. And at 2:50 in the afternoon, I could probably get to the government center before they closed and actually speak to people. Or, I could take public transportation. And when I looked it up, it was going to be a three-bus ride with three walking segments. The walking was going to be a total of 22 minutes, but three bus seats, and that was going to take me about an hour and 20 minutes, at which point Fairfax County Government Center would be close to closing. So, you can see why I really like the third option, metro access or abilities ride. Metro access is a one-seat ride that would take me door-to-door. Abilities ride would take me in a one-seat ride curb-to-curb, but I have to plan ahead a day to a week, and I don't always plan ahead that well. But that service depends on the bus route service. So, I, so my goal here tonight is to encourage Metro to continue to work with the jurisdictions, Fairfax County, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, to maintain public bus service so that people like me can get where we want to go, when we want to go. Thank you very much. I do commend Metro for doing such an excellent job.
Thank you, Ms. Nuzell. Next is Rico Dancy, followed by Alex Mendelson. Rico, are you here this evening? Dancy, Rico.
Hello, my name is Alex Mendelson, and I am a Commissioner on Arlington County's Transportation Commission, but I'm here representing myself. I'm a high school student in Arlington County, and metro rail and metro bus are vital in helping me and my peers move around our community. I'd like to take the time to appreciate the progress WAMADA has made since the start of fiscal year 2025. This includes the adoption of the Better Bus Network, improved rail service, and other improvements that help modernize and improve the customer experience. A thriving transit system is a major asset to our region. That being said, I'd like to take some time to reflect on a bunch of proposals for fiscal year 2026. As for rail service and operations, I'm excited to see a variety of positive changes proposed. I strongly support the supplemental peak service on the red and silver lines and the partial yellow line extension to green belt. I also support splitting the eastern portion of the silver line as service levels would better be matched with ridership and demand. Lastly, the increase in weekend operating hours is the most exciting change to see as it will increase access to opportunity, airports, and social events at times not well-served by transit in our region today. Regarding fares, I'm enthusiastic to see the introduction of open payment, which further increases the accessibility of transit. I look forward to the rollout of this new system across all of metro rail and metro bus. I also want to encourage WAMADA to work quickly and diligently with other regional transit providers to ensure open payment is made universal across the DMV. Next, I want to discuss the capital side of the budget. I'm happy to see WAMADA's focus on maintaining existing services and a state of good repair over the costly expansion of electric buses. The best way for WAMADA to meet its environmental goals is to provide more service and take more cars off of our roads. Furthermore, it may be worth avoiding future bus electrification-related grants until dedicated capital and operating funding is established as these buses are more logistically difficult and expensive to operate and store due to the range and charging requirements. I also want to encourage WAMADA to work as hard as possible to leverage I also want to encourage WAMADA to work as hard as possible to leverage existing properties for revenue. Parking lots with low usage should be looked at for long-term redevelopment. Lastly, I want to discuss the customer experience while riding Metro buses during planned detours. During the inauguration, WAMADA created helpful detour maps for each individual bus route that was impacted. This was incredibly helpful, as it allowed me to visualize and easily understand how I would need to make my trip. I would also like to encourage WAMADA to further build on this by integrating planned detours with digital tools that are available. Our neighbors at the Maryland Department of Transportation recently started a collaboration with the Transit App to display detours and impacted bus stops directly on the map for customers. This has been a major improvement, and I hope to see WAMADA implement something similar. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and I hope you take my ideas into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Nice seeing you. Alex was the last speaker. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Wow, this is pretty incredible for a WAMADA board meeting, public hearing. All right. Well, with that said, I want to thank you all for coming. As I, if there is anyone else that would like to speak, where are we here? Okay, so that was our last speaker. And the hearing is now concluded. You're welcome to submit additional written testimony. It must be received by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, February 10th. Testimony can be submitted online at wamada.com/budget. Online, you have the option to either complete a survey, write free-form comments, upload a letter, petition, or other document. You can also mail testimony to the Office of the Secretary, WAMADA, S-E-C-T-T-U-E-P-O-BOX 44390, Washington, D.C., 20026-4390. That address is out at the table. Again, all testimony must be received by 5:00 p.m. on February 10th. We encourage everyone to submit comments online if possible. You also have the option to speak at an online hearing, which is being held tomorrow at noon, as well as two remaining in-person hearings tomorrow at WAMADA's LeFont Plaza headquarters in Washington, D.C., and Wednesday at Metro's New Carrollton headquarters in Maryland. Please see staff at the registration table on your way out if you'd like to participate in any of those hearings. Information on how to register for the remaining hearings can also be found at online at wamada.com/budget. If you're planning to attend or speak at a subsequent hearing, I'll note that individuals who haven't provided testimony at prior hearings on these dockets will be given priority to speak. Thank you again for joining us tonight and for taking time out of your evening to testify. Thanks so much.